Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our public hearing on our American Rescue Plan local allocation. My name is Samir Sid, and I am the Chief of Staff to County Executive Calvin Ball. For your information, this meeting is currently being recorded and streamed live on Facebook. And with that, I will turn it over to the County Executive.
Thank you so much, Samir, and thank you all for being here this evening. The COVID-19 pandemic has had far-reaching consequences beyond direct health impacts experienced by members of our community who have contracted the virus. Repercussions of this pandemic are significant, affecting our children, our businesses, and, frankly, almost all of our residents in numerous ways. Fortunately, the federal government, with the assistance of strong leadership from our federal delegation, passed the American Rescue Plan Act, providing state and local governments what the resources needed to continue to address immediate and long-term challenges. Howard County was allocated $63.2 million from the American Rescue Plan, and the first half of that funding will be available during this current fiscal year. Earlier this month, we submitted our initial recovery plan, which outlined our path forward for continued response and recovery from the pandemic. This plan includes early initiatives for the use of funding, such as: providing services to disproportionately impacted communities; addressing the negative economic impacts of the pandemic experienced by our residents and our businesses; supporting our frontline workers who have put themselves at risk; and improving our county infrastructure gaps highlighted by the pandemic. As always, it's a priority for us to engage our broader community as we determine the highest and best use of these funds. We began our community engagement efforts at the beginning of September, creating an American Rescue Plan website for our county. The website contains a brief overview of the American Rescue Plan, the county's initial plan submission for the Department of Treasury, and a form allowing us to receive your feedback. Last Thursday, our community engagement efforts continued with the launch of a community survey on the American Rescue Plan website. This survey will provide us with concrete and measurable data on how members of our community prioritize the various expenditure categories available under the American Rescue Plan. I encourage all of our residents and community stakeholders to utilize this tool, and please provide the crucial feedback we need to make this plan a success. Tonight, we will conduct a public hearing to gather direct input from our residents. This hearing will be conducted in the same format as our public budget hearings, as we continue our county's longstanding tradition of including our community and our decision-making process. Additional efforts of our community engagement plan include several stakeholder engagement meetings being scheduled throughout the month of October, and a presentation to the Howard County Council on November 3 at 1:00 p.m. Throughout this pandemic, we've worked hard to engage our community, collect feedback, and implement effective policy that will save lives and alleviate the compounding effects of this crisis. Tonight's hearing is the next step in our ongoing engagement efforts, and I encourage everyone tuning in to visit our American Rescue Plan website at www.howardcountymd.gov/ARP. There you can complete our community survey, and if you are providing oral testimony tonight, please be sure to provide your testimony in writing too, through our ARP public feedback form. Through this extensive community engagement plan and from our very thoughtful and thorough HocoRise report, we are confident the useful—the use of American Rescue Plan will set Howard County on a path to emerge from this pandemic even stronger than before. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Samir.
Thank you, County Executive. And next, I'd like to turn it over to Tom Leatherby, Senior Managing Associate of Hagerty Consulting, to provide an overview of the American Rescue Plan. Tom?
Thank you, Samir. I'm going to bring up a few slides to provide an overview of the American Rescue Plan Act and specifically the state and local fiscal recovery funds program as it impacts Howard County. The American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA—excuse me—is the largest federal direct subsidy program of its kind in the nation's history. Provided by Public Law 117-2, provides $1.9 trillion of federal funding to aid in recovery from the COVID-19 health pandemic. ARPA provides a total of $350 billion to state, local, territorial, and tribal governments through the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program, or SLFRF. These SLFRF funds are distributed to direct recipients, such as Howard County, and then also to indirect recipients, which are smaller communities. Howard County, as the County Executive mentioned, has been allocated $63.3 million in SLFRF funds. This funding is provided in two equal tranches, one this year and one for next fiscal year, to be spent over a period of time. The SLFRF is rare among federal grant programs in that the funding is provided on an upfront basis rather than a reimbursement basis. And that's in recognition of the nature—the adverse nature that the pandemic had on local governments' fiscal stability. So SLFRF funds are allowed to be used for a certain number of statutorily eligible uses. Number one, to respond to the COVID-19 public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. Number two, to respond to the needs of workers performing essential work during the pandemic by providing premium pay to these workers. Number three, for provision of government services to the extent that that government experienced a revenue reduction due to the public health emergency. And number four, to make necessary improvements in water, sewer, or broadband that have become obvious due to the nature of the pandemic. The timeline for the use of SLFRF funding: The funds can be used to cover eligible costs during a period beginning on March 3, 21, and ending on December 31, 2024, with all of the funding needing to be finally spent by December 31 of 2026. For certain programs that provide direct assistance to individuals, households, and businesses, a retroactive lookback is permissible. Recipients of funding have to engage in a thoughtful process to allocate the funding, including conducting meaningful community engagement efforts, such as the hearing that's going on tonight. Projects may be authorized at any time during the eligible time period that's provided for in the program guidance, and then funds may be transferred between projects during that time for eligible uses. The Treasury's primary guidance on SLFRF is known as the interim final rule. The interim final rule provides guidance on eligibility, compliance, reporting, and other administrative matters. The interim final rule provides a non-exclusive listing of eligible projects and divides those into seven expenditure categories: public health, negative economic impacts, services to disproportionately impacted communities, premium pay for affected workers, infrastructure, revenue replacement, and administrative costs. The interim final rule also details a certain number of costs that are entirely ineligible under the SLFRF program: extraordinary deposits to pension funds, payment of debt service or judgment, contribution to rainy day funds, or for states offset to tax cuts. It's important to realize that the SLFRF program provides two lenses through which the use of federal funding must be observed. The first is equity, and the second is evidence. The equity lens dictates that recipients have to engage in meaningful community engagement about how they're going to use their funds, and they must seek to use these funds in a manner that increases overall equity within the community, reducing barriers to those who are traditionally unable to access or benefit from government services, and helping to serve those who were disproportionately impacted by the public health emergency. In addition, recipients must formulate projects and then report on projects that qualify as evidence-based interventions or any project for which a detailed program evaluation will be conducted. And evidence becomes a very important part of the reporting process, with required program metrics being collected at each stage. The SLFRF program has a number of required reports. Due to its size, Howard County falls into the most detailed reporting tier. The county has been required to complete an interim report and an initial recovery plan, which—the recovery plan is found on the county's website. The recovery plan will be updated annually, and then quarterly, the county will file project and expenditure reports. These reports don't just speak to the financial details of the county's progress, but they also speak to the tracking of programmatic data and programmatic goals. There are a number of important guidance documents that have been issued by the Treasury, the interim final rule, a number of frequently asked questions, and guidance documents that govern the use of these funds. Of course, project eligibility is always based on the specific design of each project. It's a fact-based determination. The interim final rule and the other guidance documents give support to decision-makers, but there is no preapproval of projects by the Department of the Treasury. Depending on how a project is classified for eligibility purposes, reporting requirements may value greatly, as may program administration requirements. Because of that joint consultation between county management, legal authorities, and other departments, including purchasing, grants management, finance, and budget, is necessary regarding eligibility determinations and program administration decisions. Again, the county has provided a number of meaningful ways for public input into the process. The public feedback form and the survey are both located on the county's ARP website. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Tom. So now we will begin our public testimony portion of the hearing. For all speakers, I would ask if you could note if you're representing an organization at the onset of your remarks. If you are, you will be provided five minutes to provide comments. If you're speaking as an individual, you'll be provided three minutes to provide comments. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the first speaker of the night, Carol Service. Carol, are you there?
Carol's been unmuted.
Carol?
She says she does not wish to testify.
Okay, thank you. And so we will move to the second speaker for the evening, Patricia Butler. Patricia, are you there?
She is not there. She's not present.
Not present. Okay, we'll move to the third speaker, Paul Wierczynski. Paul, are you there?
Yes, I am. Testifying on behalf of the Howard County Citizens Association, I'm a board member. The following items have been endorsed by our board. There's currently an $800 million backlog of school maintenance. Most of this is for heating, ventilating, and air conditioning systems that are not working properly and need—or need upgrades because of COVID-19. We recommend that some of these funds be utilized for that particular purpose. Second, Howard County has had the greatest amount of trees cut down over the past two decades in Maryland. This has gotten worse because of the ashbore problem. We see stumps along the streets in all areas. Trees have not been replaced. We recommend that some money be used to replace the street trees that have formerly been part of our landscape. This provides for the attenuation of pollutants and for better breathing for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Paul. It's always good to hear from you. Just had a couple quick questions. One, I know that you're speaking on behalf of HCCA, and I also know that you were very active in some of the advocacy and work with older adults. And so if you have any other thoughts from HCCA, and then just as an individual, on older adults, I would love to hear that. And you can—you can mail that in, you can email that in if you want to gather that. And then the second is you referenced that Howard County was—the jurisdiction had the most trees cut down over the past two decades. Did you happen to have a source or a place where we could go and get some more details?
Yeah, we actually provided that information as part of the ongoing discussion about trees and tree cover in Howard County. I'd be glad to submit that and provide that information.
Thank you so much, Paul. Really appreciate your advocacy and your continued partnership in helping move Howard County forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Our next speaker is Tracy Williams. Tracy, are you there?
Tracy's been unmuted.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Tracy, yes, we can. Are you representing an organization?
No, I am an individual speaker.
Okay. Thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Tracy Williams, and I am a 21-year resident of Ellicott City. I am here as a mother, a pupil personnel worker, and a community organizer to appeal to the county to use their American Rescue Plan funding to improve Howard County's childcare system. Childcare in Howard County is expensive and hard to find. I work with families who need two incomes to live in Howard County. The cost of childcare is often close or equivalent to the salary one parent brings home. Assistance with childcare will allow these families to remain in Howard County and be a part of the fabric that makes our county so great. During the pandemic, many of the families I work with as a pupil personnel worker lost their jobs because they could not find affordable childcare and had to stay home with their children. Schools are back in session, but many of these parents are still unemployed because they can't find affordable childcare for their non-school-age children or for their school-age children after school. I also work with single mothers and fathers living in a one-income household. Many of these single parents who would like to further their educations or work full-time. We must provide equitable opportunities for our parents to enhance their educations and provide for their families. So many of our single-parent families can only get ahead and improve their financial circumstances with this childcare assistance. Spending our ARP funds on childcare will be beneficial to the county in the long run. Our children will be better developed, students will be better prepared academically when they become school age, and they will be better—they will be better socially adjusted as well. Help us to build a better county by providing childcare assistance to our neediest families. Thank you.
Thank you for your continued work and leadership, and as usual, I agree with you, Tracy. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tracy. Our next speaker is Lisa Dean. Lisa, are you there? Okay. Our next speaker is Bruce Fulton. Bruce, are you there? Okay, our next speaker is Angela Blackwell. Angela, are you there? Okay, following Angela, we have Jackie Eng. Jackie, are you there?
I am.
And Jackie, I assume you're representing an organization?
Actually, no. Tonight, I'm just speaking as a Howard County citizen, a proud Howard County citizen. And I just have just a couple of notes. Number one, I fully support the opportunity to use some of these funds to help complete, respond to some of the needs in our school system. Deferred maintenance, I think there are also, as we've heard recently, some issues regarding can we use these funds to find ways to respond to overcapacity issues, et cetera? The other thing I would like—the only other point I'd like to make is that aging persons with disabilities are consistently facing rents that are challenging and not being able to find affordable housing. Is there a way that these funds can be used to support new housing opportunities or subsidize, create some sort of a subsidy program that helps support these particular population groups? I know subsidies bring with them a ongoing commitment from the county, but perhaps there's some creative dialogue that we can have that can find a way to help these people. And I—let me add to that group are young people that are aging out of the foster care system. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jackie. Really good to hear your voice, and really appreciate your advocacy for those critical members of our community.
Thank you, Jackie. Our next speaker is Joel Breuda.
I have not found him.
Joel, are you there?
I'm just signed in, but I'm not presenting.
Oh, thank—you very much.
Good to hear your voice, anyway, Joel. Hope all is well, my friend.
Got it. And our next speaker is Nicholas Landolina. Okay. Our next speaker is Barry Matha. Barry, are you there?
Barry's been unmuted.
My name is Barry Matha. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yeah. My name is Barry Matha, and I have been in our wonderful county for the last 40 years. One of the problems that our county is facing is the unaffordability of the housing. The lady before me mentioned need for affordable housing, and I totally agree with that. We just need to find ways to provide good housing to our residents at fair and affordable prices. COVID has caused many of us to work from home, and that also adds to the housing demand. When we analyze—the housing prices, what we need is more developable land, and by that I mean larger infrastructure for water and sewer capability. And the new funding that would be available, I would urge that bulk of it be spent in improving the infrastructure by providing more water and sewer capability in our county. I think that would make the housing problem solvable and make the county housing much more affordable if there is a larger supply of developable land by adding more water and sewer capability. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Barry.
Thank you, Barry. Our next speaker is Masood Fershori. Masood, are you there?
Yeah, hi. I'm here. My son Masood Fershori and I own a small childcare center in Howard County. Currently, we are facing a lot of issues here. They have been mentioned today by folks before me, like staffing issues, maintenance issues, COVID restrictions and whatnot. The funding is very limited. We don't have finances, especially the private owners at this point. They really need help. At least what is promised should come forth earlier than later, if at all. We applied for this loan a couple months ago, and I have not heard anything on that, any progress has been made, what has been assigned, where they can be used. There are problems all over the place, really running the center. We have inquiries coming. Parents want to bring in their children, they want to go back to job, but we just don't have the stuff available. You know, everybody's looking for a job, but they are scared to come out. The rates are going up. We cannot charge the parents. So there are a lot of issues going on that should be considered, and the grant should be issued earlier than later. That's all I will say at this point. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments, Masood. Can I just ask you—you've referenced a loan that you applied for. Do you know what loan?
Yeah, that was—I let me see. American Rescue Plan, the APR.
So through the federal government?
I thought that was through the county. I'm not sure.
Well, I'll tell you what, we—I think we have—we have your contact information. Yeah, we have your contact information. We'll make sure somebody connects with you.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Masood. Our next speaker is Thelma Hayes. Thelma, are you there? Okay. Our next speaker is Andy Spice. Andy, are you there? Okay. Our next speaker is Willie Flowers. Willie, are you there?
Good evening. Good evening, County Executive and staff. My name is Willie Flowers, and I represent the Howard County NAACP. Over the last several years, we've tried to add a social justice aspect to technology overall, meaning that while technology has expanded, it hasn't developed into an expectation throughout the entire community. Our interest is making technology look like community development, and when you have a community development corporation, we want to do for technology what community development corporations do for community development, housing, entrepreneurship, and so—and human services. Our interest is looking at the funding that you have for that purpose, and I guess the question is if we could create an infrastructure with portions of this funding to, number one, add advocacy that encourages even daycares to have coding as soon as young people enter daycares, and have the same expectation at every level in the public schools, but with the external support that kind of looks like youth sports, in that every season there's a sport, every season, at every age, there's an elevation and improvement of skills, if you're talking athletically. The goal is to have— The goal is to have technology, whether we call it STEM, STEAM, to look the same way, meaning coding, hacking, robotics, gaming, uh, uh, artificial intelligence at every level and to catch up with the rest of the world. Because as you know, um, China, uh, has already stated, they want to control artificial intelligence by 2025. So we're in a race internationally, and I think that particularly in Howard County, but in the rest of America, we should have a better role to make technology across the board accessible to young people and to aging adults and also seniors who should be refreshed and prepared for the future as well. Because the interest is having, um, normalizing technology to the point that our young people can look at the self-check at Giant even and say they can make a better device. And right now, I don't know if that's there. So the interest is, I guess the question is, can that funding be used to create an infrastructure that would, uh, roll out such a, a strategy? Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, for your testimony and just, uh, relatedly, thank you for your advocacy through the NAACP. Tom, could you give maybe a very, very brief assessment based upon what you just heard?
Absolutely, sir. So there are a number of different ways that that sort of program or portions of that sort of program could be eligible under the SLFRF program. Uh, probably not as a, a overall curriculum building, but maybe some of the individual building blocks could be eligible. So I think, uh, there's a lot of value in exploring the potential for last mile broadband to make sure that there's technology at the right place. There's value in looking at disproportionately impacted communities and how they were impacted during the pandemic from a geographic basis in lack of connectivity and technology access. Because as we know, that when people went virtual in school and work, there were communities and, uh, part of every community that were left behind, and that was, that was unfortunate and can't be how we move forward. So I think that SLFRF funding could be used for some of the building blocks, even if maybe the broader program may not sound like an eligible program.
Thank you for your, uh, quick assessment, Tom. And again, uh, thank you, Willie, for all of your advocacy. Uh, if you send in the elements that you're talking about, it'll definitely be considered because I think that there is, for many of the reasons that you outlined, something that we should be considering, how we can make sure that, uh, our residents of all ages are well-equipped to embrace the future and lead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Willie. Uh, our next speaker is Nina Basu.
I'm right here. Yeah, I'm here, sorry. Um, so thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight, Nina Basu, on behalf of the Inner Arbor Trust. Um, I have the unique opportunity to lead an organization that had a very odd impacts by COVID. One is a performing arts venue. Certainly, we stopped for, um, eight months entirely, and we still haven't come back to normal from a performing arts piece. However, as a public park, or rather a publicly accessible park, we were able to have a lot of safe interaction. And I think one of the things COVID taught us is how important, um, that public space is to the community, especially in a rapidly developing, um, and, uh, urbanizing area in, in downtown Columbia. So our suggestion here today is that the county consider investing some of the, uh, funds available in stormwater and park infrastructure in downtown Columbia and in other areas where there are those opportunities for that connectivity. Columbia is certainly a new city, and we are seeing so many exciting things happening. However, as, as anyone who's been to Wine in the Woods, for example, knows, um, a lot of the stormwater in downtown Columbia is very out of date and, um, requires some updating, stream restoration, and other improvements. The county very generously provided the Inner Arbor Trust with a grant, um, in partnership with Howard Eco Works to do some conservation landscaping, which, if I invite everyone to come out and see it, it's a great win-win opportunity to take care of some of the, uh, environmental and stormwater issues that exist on site, but also, um, to provide job training for the kind of jobs that our economy needs and the kind of jobs that we don't have enough trained people doing here in Howard County. So I think that in addition to that type of improvement in downtown Columbia and elsewhere in the county, county investment in things like accelerating the pathway network and, um, accelerating some of this bike accessibility is also a great investment of what are one-time funds. We found out how important those opportunities were to mental health during COVID, and that excitement about the use of public outdoor space is not going away. So thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you, Nina. I'm very excited about the work that's going on in Columbia and, uh, really appreciate your advocacy, especially related to stormwater and park infrastructure as well as the pathway and biking networks. Uh, we've made a, a lot of progress over the last few years, and there's still a lot more to be done.
Thank you, Nina. Our next speaker is Nithi Srivastava. Nithi, are you there? Okay. Our next speaker is Amanda Rooney. Amanda, are you there? Got it. Uh, our next speaker is Rhonda Watson. Rhonda, are you there?
Yeah. How are you? Okay, thank you guys for allowing me to speak. My name is Rhonda Watson, and I've been a Howard County citizen and resident for over twenty-five years. I'm a registered child care provider. I'm also the president of the Howard County Family Childcare Association. We are a nonprofit organization that has been operating since nineteen eighty-one. We have around a hundred and fifty members. These members are not only small business owners here in Howard County, but residents of Howard County. We all chose to invest and raise our families in childcare. We are, and we were not able to receive funding for nonprofits during the pandemic due to the nonprop, due to our nonprophecy being delayed due to the pandemic. Family childcare is a choice for parents to seek a small learning and personal environment. Since the pandemic came, both child, childcare programs have gone through a decline or have no other choice but to close. The decline in family childcare has been going on for several years. So since we've had no support to help restructure or campaign to recruit. Since the pandemic, there has been numerous babies born, which is, which amplified the problem for not enough infant slots or programs to serve the parents' needs. Parents need to return to work and know that their child is in a safe and nurturing environment. For families that are seeking a small environment, since we, since the parents have, since the parents have no other choice, um, but to send their children to childcare, we have to make the childcare, um, inform, we have to make the childcare affordable. Um, for those parents that have these new infants and can't afford, um, nannies, they have no other choice but to send their children to unlicensed childcare, which is truly, as we all know, unsafe. This is also an issue that, um, a lot of our night and weekend childcare, which is mainly done by in-home providers, are now closed or decreased their hours due to the impact of the pandemic. With all these large centers opening in Howard County with private scholarships and grants, how do we have a standing chance without help from the county to stabilize? If there is not enough money invested in family childcare, we are in, as in-home providers, in-home providers will become extinct because we will, we do not have, we don't have, we will not be able to earn a livable wage. We don't have months to stabilize to come. Most of us won't be able to sustain much longer. There is no stabilization without childcare. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Let me just thank you again, Rhonda, for your work, your advocacy, your partnership. Um, the association has been an incredible partner in, uh, helping us just get through this pandemic. And thank you again for your testimony and just reaffirming the importance of childcare uh, for our little ones and frankly, for our entire families and our community.
Thank you, Rhonda. Our next speaker is Amma Felix. Amma, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Um, as, uh, my name is Amma Felix. I'm speaking as an individual who, uh, is a Howard County resident in the community. I'm here to testify about, um, much-needed investments in early childhood education and childcare for children ages zero to five in Howard County. Uh, we, my family personally suffered a loss, um, with the closing of the Children's Learning Center, which was part of Howard Community College's, uh, facilities, which closed, um, and provided high-quality childcare to local residents. Childcare is one of the top three investments among families, second to housing. Early childhood education and childcare investment is desperately needed in this county as according to the Howard County Public Schools, only fifty-seven percent of all children aged five are kindergarten-ready. And if you disaggregate those figures for race and, um, income, forty-four percent of children who are black, thirty-five percent who are Latino, and twenty-nine percent of children from low-income households are kindergarten-ready. Uh, strong early childhood education is a key enabler to family economic security. It keeps families in the workforce. Um, early childhood care, childcare, um, small businesses predominantly employ workers who are disproportionately impacted by low-wage opportunities trapping them in near-poverty status. Investing in early childcare infrastructure, particularly teachers, will allow for better compensation for an industry with high concentrations of women and people of color. Increased childcare slots are essential. The number of available childhood childcare slots ages zero to five does not meet demand. According to Maryland Family Network, in two, twenty nineteen, Howard County had, uh, just over nine thousand slots for over seventeen thousand children under the age of five. Again, this was pre-pandemic numbers, and we've known that's gone down since then. Uh, relief funds are essential to help stabilize this very fragile industry. Um, our neighbors are doing it. As of November twenty twenty, Montgomery County added nearly four hundred full-day pre-K slots in the past year. They have a four-year plan. In year one, they've invested seven million dollars, and they are projecting to invest over the next three years, ten million, twelve million, and thirteen million dollars respectively. Howard County, too, must be bold in prioritizing investments in the creation of a more robust early childcare and education system that provides affordable, high-quality, developmentally-appropriate instruction for its children and proper compensation for its teachers. We all deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Amma. Really appreciate your advocacy. Can you send us, when you have a chance, the reference point for the Montgomery County data that you noted?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Amma, again. Uh, our next speaker is Paul Pinkney. Paul, are you there?
Are you muted?
Are you unmuted?
Paul?
Yes?
Uh, you're unmuted and able to testify.
Can, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Paul Pinkney. I'm a forty-year, uh, resident of Columbia. And my, my, I have a question about the HOA services in Columbia for seniors. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Paul.
Uh, when a person gets, uh, seventy-five or older, and he, uh, or she cannot, uh, do their lawns properly, is there any service in Columbia that could help them, uh, get their lawns cut? Are these funds that you, uh, dispersing couldn't, uh, you put some aside to assist seniors in lawn services? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your questions and your advocacy, which just highlight the importance of investing in our seniors. I think we have your contact information, and we'll make sure somebody reaches out to you to talk about those services. And we'll also, as we're evaluating, uh, the best use of this funding, take your recommendations under close consideration. So thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Our next speaker is Nikki Highsmith Vernick. Nikki, are you there?
I am. Good evening.
Good evening, Nikki.
Um, I'm Nikki Highsmith Vernick. I'm testifying for an organization. I'm president and CEO of the Horizon Foundation. Uh, Dr. Ball, thank you for your leadership during this global health pandemic, and thank you for asking for community input all along the way. Um, as Howard County's community health foundation, we appreciate the opportunity to testify tonight on how to best utilize funding from the American Rescue Plan as our community and our country attempt to recover from the COVID-nineteen pandemic. While our public health has suffered greatly in the past year and a half, this funding represents an unprecedented opportunity to invest in our public health system. Um, as you know, unfortunately, our public health has been sorely underfunded in our state for decades, and we saw the dire consequences of such disinvestment during this pandemic, especially for communities of color. So we now have the opportunity to right the ship, to better equip our public health system to respond to these needs and to better serve the health of all of our residents. We urge you to prioritize investments in health equity and mental health as your administration decides how these funds should be used. We are only just beginning to understand the long-term effects of this public health crisis, but we do know that mental health needs are rising. Our residents have suffered immense loss, grief, and isolation. Excuse me. Our students have endured enormous change and destruction, as you noted at the beginning of your remarks. And our residents with limited incomes have faced economic turmoil. So now, more than other, we need to be here to support the mental health and well-being of our community. So we recommend you center this one-time funding to accomplish the following goals. And I'm going to touch on Tom's criteria of meeting equity and evidence-based interventions. So first, invest more in the mental health of our residents. Specifically, expand our mobile health crisis teams to twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and ensure they are centering equity in their responses. Enhance school-based mental health services so that one-on-one counseling is available during the school day to all students in Howard County. Help pediatric and primary care practices offer onsite behavioral health services and establish a crisis stabilization center to better address immediate behavioral health needs. And secondly, we recommend that American Recovery Act funding be used to ensure our health department, who we love, is fully equipped to respond to all of our community health challenges. And as part of this, we recommend that you make investments to eliminate maternal and child health inequities. Quality prenatal and postnatal care should be readily accessible to all pregnant women in our county. Commit to funding, um, to improve the nutrition and physical activity environments in Howard County. We know that we have done an enormous amount of work to date, uh, but our high prevalence of heart disease, cancer, diabetes, and stroke, they're the leading cause of death in non-COVID years, and there were underlying conditions that exacerbated severe illness and death from COVID-nineteen, especially for communities of color. Um, so we want you to know that we're your partner. The Horizon Foundation will also be allocating additional resources to supporting health equity, fighting chronic disease, and bolstering mental health services in twenty twenty-two. We want, as you do, to help our community recover for this pandemic and to be more resilient in the future. We stand ready as a committed partner with your administration and other community groups to ensure that all residents of Howard County live long, healthy lives and have the ability to thrive. Thank you so very much for your time and for your leadership over the past difficult eighteen months. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki, and thank Horizon for being such great partners. And I'm very glad that you noted, number one, there were challenges before the pandemic, but number two, in addition to the physical challenges, the mental health has really suffered among so many in our community around the state, the nation, and the world. We do have a lot of work to do, and I'm looking forward to us doing that work together.
I appreciate your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Our next speaker is Net Stokes. Net, are you there?
Hello, and yes, I am here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. My name is Net Stokes, and I'm the Executive and Community Engagement Director of Just Living Advocacy. I come here on representing the organization as well as a community advocate. I am a 25-year resident of Howard County. I come to you and ask for these funds to be help-affiliated with childcare. As you heard earlier from three of our, from three other testifiers, that childcare is very much needed in the Howard County area. The size and diversity of the investment should match the size and diversity of the challenge because we need them to help parents, teachers, whether they are in home or in a center, and spur business development for all forms of childcare in this sector. Specifically, I would like to see some emphasis placed on home childcare because they're typically placed within the communities where parents would have access to. And the majority of these parents are single mothers who are one income and splitting their income between housing and education and childcare. As we face important decisions about the issues and priorities that we like to see our county government levels and address, although we examine in relation to other major priorities such as healthcare or education, issues surrounding the availability and affordability of high-quality childcare and expanded early childhood education are fast becoming a very important topic within our communities. Despite the rising importance of these issues, gaps still remain in understanding how the public views the challenges and potential solutions for addressing childcare and early learning. How are working parents today handling childcare needs? Do they have good options for childcare? Is childcare affordable for these parents? Does the availability of childcare influence personal decisions about work, including the types of jobs considered, the work hours worked, and the responsibilities desired? Families face hurdles finding affordable childcare arrangements, and more importantly to that, access to it. We are dealing with some desert areas of childcare today. In terms of career and financial impacts of childcare workers and families, we have to decide whether they have or someone in their family has had their career or career prospects negatively affected, such as passing up a job because of lack of childcare, promotion, working fewer hours, untraditional work hours, or not being able to pursue new skills due to childcare considerations. The most important childcare issues may be adversely affecting the earning and job-promotion potential. Other findings show that Hispanic, Black families are disproportionately reside in childcare deserts, specifically in areas such as Elk Ridge and Savage. Nearly most of the families that our organization have served are living in areas where there's under supply of licensed childcare now. And these things were happening pre-pandemic because of the lack of access to it. Childcare deserts have an average, on an average, maternal labor force participation rates that are much lower than communities where there is adequate childcare supplies within our Howard County. We have found that Columbia does have adequate supply of childcare resources in some areas of Howard County, does not specifically, again, that is Elk Ridge. Childcare deserts vary from zip code to zip code in Howard County. And with that, and based on the other previous testimonies on childcare, I thank you for your time and opportunity to speak on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Net, and thank you for all of the important and good work that Just Living does.
Thank you, Net. Our last registered speaker for the night is Joe Wilmot. Joe, are you there?
I don't plan to testify.
Thank you, Joe.
Good to hear your voice anyway, Joe.
Thank you for that. And now, is there anyone else on the line who hasn't spoken but wishes to speak?
I have Katie DeSalvo. She is unmuted.
Okay.
Thank you. My name is Katie DeSalvo-Thronson, here speaking on behalf of myself and Save the Children's Learning Center. Our organization was founded last summer when Howard Community College closed the Children's Learning Center, which provided a lab school for early childhood students, sorry, students studying early childhood education, and on campus childcare for parents and students. Continue to view this as a tragic choice by a community college that has, in many ways, really emphasized access. Hundreds of families voiced support for this center, and I came to see this as hundreds of families wanting more options for childcare. That includes before and after care, summer camps, more support for little people, and more good jobs for people predominantly women and women of color who do this essential work for our children and our whole society's future. We connected with others in the sector and quickly learned how precarious it is right now. Rhonda Watkins, for example, talked about there being more than 400 in-home daycares before the pandemic and there being about 250 now. Last summer, the Center for American Progress reported that COVID could lead to nearly half of the childcare supply in the country closing permanently, and women have left the workforce in droves. So, according to the State Labor Department, between January and June of this year, Maryland saw 13,000 men enter the labor force and saw 57,000 women leave. Our current childcare system is not good for women, for families, and it is also not good for business. As Amma Felix talked about, with kindergarten readiness of 29%, 30% for lower-income five-year-olds in our county, our current childcare and early education system is not serving our kids. We talk about inequity and how much of it is baked into the systems we live with, yet so often, we make tweaks. We put a little more money into an existing program, and the overall system doesn't change. What is exciting about this funding is the opportunity to put millions in to substantially change the system locally. We could talk about things like launching early Head Start, providing support and financing to new childcare businesses, substantially increasing vouchers and affordability, making investments towards universal pre-K. In summary, we've got a broken system that's bad for family economics and mobility, bad for our workforce, and bad for kids. And families all over the county know this as a stressor, know this as a frequent pain point for families across the income range, and want to see the county lead with a bold, ambitious, large-scale plan that will change lives, that will support families, support businesses, support the educational outcomes of kids, and support equity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Katie. Really appreciate your testimony and your bold ideas.
Thank you, Katie. And I believe Angela Blackwell joined us. Angela, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay. Yes.
Okay. How are you doing?
Great.
I'm sorry, I logged on late, so I'm not caught up as to what's being, you know, what's being said.
That's okay. This is your opportunity to give us your recommendations and thoughts on the American Rescue Plan funding.
Okay. Well, I've been having quite a bit of struggle with finding sufficient childcare. I have a five-year-old that it's kind of been a struggle. I found a place before he started kindergarten this year, and that was the Cradle Rock Children's Center, but the only thing was, when school started, they didn't offer before and after care. That was probably the best childcare I've been able to locate in Howard County, unfortunately. Like I said, you know, they don't participate with the before and after care, and it's just been a real struggle, especially with the fact that I don't have family in Maryland, so to speak. And it's just been hard. It's been hard. It's either, you know, my husband or I have to sacrifice, you know, our work schedule, or my husband's had to, you know, stop working, you know, employment, you know, at times just so that we would be able to make sure that our son gets to the bus stop safe and gets home, you know, safely from the bus stop. I'm a Harvard County employee, and, you know, I just would, you know, wish, I wish there would be some type of, I guess, access to childcare for Howard County employees in some sort of capacity. But other than that, you know, I'm just like, it's struggle, it's struggle. And it's really hard, especially when you can't really afford to not have that extra income coming in if, you know, one or the other has to sacrifice to make sure that the child's needs are being met.
First of all, Angela, thank you so much for your dedication and your work to Howard County. I really appreciate that. And second of all, thank you for your testimony. Please know you're not alone. There are a lot of people struggling.
Right.
And even though you weren't able to tune in for the entirety of the testimony tonight, several other people noted the importance of childcare and helping families. And so, you can look forward to us trying to work on some different ideas, and I really appreciate your testimony and all that you do for Howard County.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Angela. Do we have anyone else on the line who wishes to speak that hasn't yet?
I have Lynn Locke, who has her hand raised. She is unmuted.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Ball, thank you very much for allowing us time here tonight. I'm Lynn Locke. I'm representing the Town Center Community Association. I appreciate all the hard work you've done during the pandemic and the county staff in keeping us safe. We appreciate that, and thank you for your continued hard work and efforts. We also want to thank the Food Bank for its very hard work during the last 18 months because it's been a struggle for a lot of people in the community, and the Community Action Council has done a really amazing job. We would ask, however, that if there are any ARC funds available, that some be allocated to food insecurity programs. A project near and dear to our heart are the little free pantries in Town Center, which I believe, Dr. Ball, you attended the opening of the second one in the county, which was in Town Center. So, if any grants can be given to any residential organizations or homeowners associations for installing little free pantries, that would be terrific. Some people may feel uncomfortable going to a food bank, and if they're able to go to a little free pantry, that may be a little more comfortable for them. Also, we've noted over the last 18 months, a lot of the federal and state rent assistance programs have ended, so if any funds could be put toward rent assistance, we would definitely appreciate that as a community association. A lot of residents on this call commented on school infrastructure, and you can't beat China or any other country in the world unless you have best-in-class schools at home. So, we would ask that any school infrastructure projects that were put to the back burner be moved to the front burner and that ARP monies be allocated to any school infrastructure projects that benefit all citizens of the county. We would ask that you look at assisting the Columbia Association in some grant funding for an elevator in Historic Oakland, which is one of the oldest buildings in the county, built in 1811. Unfortunately, people with disabilities are not able to access the second and third floor of that building, and pre-COVID, approximately 15,000 to 18,000 people attended events within Historic Oakland. And if there are any funds available to benefit the community by putting in an elevator to assist those, it would be terrific. We also note that there is a wonderful house next to the Howard County Center of African-American Culture that's owned by the Columbia Association, and if any monies could be used to renovate that historic house so that that home could be used for community events that benefit the community and further diversity, equity, inclusion in the county, that would also be wonderful. Thank you for the opportunity to testify and keep up the good work.
Thank you so much, Lynn. It's always good to hear from you and really appreciate your partnership in serving Town Center and throughout Howard County. Very, very helpful ideas and thoughts, and you can look forward to continued discussion about these.
Thank you, Lynn. Is there anyone else on the line that wishes to speak that hasn't yet? Okay.
Well, thank you all so much for participating in this community conversation about investments that we can make with this historic funding from the federal government. Thanks in part to the strength of our federal delegation. Really appreciate the ideas. I'm sure you saw me and Samir taking furious notes, and we also have some of our other team members on the line. Your advocacy and your ideas are going to be strongly considered as we look at how to make these investments for the future. Please continue to take care of yourselves, be well, and have a wonderful evening.